To order, I'll read the roll real quick and then once we do the roll call and approval of the agenda, then we'll take a vote to appoint a chair for the meeting. And then in the event that Mayor Hart shows up, then the chair will relinquish and we'll kind of keep going. Okay, Mr. Bosin?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Here.
Mr. Childs?
Here.
Mr. Simon?
Here.
Ms. Wilder?
And Mr. Foyce? Can I have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I'll take a nomination for someone to serve as chair.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Childs.
Perfect.
No, don't.
Yeah, good luck.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, take away Mr. Childs.
All right. It's not my fault, I got gout. Okay. Do we need an approval of the minutes? Are we good there? All right, we can have an update from Grow Cedar Valley.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Yeah, good afternoon. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good day.
Thank you for allowing us a few moments tonight to speak with you. My name is Dave Wilson and I'm the current Grow Cedar Valley Board Chair. And on behalf of the Grow Cedar Valley Board of Directors and team, I would like to thank you and begin by expressing our gratitude to the city of Waterloo for your partnership and unwavering support in so many different ways. Your collaboration is vital to the work we do and we're proud of the progress we've made together to strengthen the Cedar Valley. Grow Cedar Valley's mission is to champion economic and community development across the region. And this includes balancing the needs of our broader communities with those of the business communities in which we serve. And we're focused on building and thriving Cedar Valley that's a destination for people, talent, and investment. And we're excited to take this opportunity to share the updates of the work that we've accomplished in the last six months. From workforce development initiatives to promoting our community and supporting local businesses, we're very eager to highlight how your support and your partnership have made these efforts possible. Thank you again for your partnership and the trust that you've placed in us to serve as stewards of this region's economic vitality. So at this time, I'd like to invite Lisa Skubel, Vice President of Economic Development of Grow Cedar Valley, to be our first presenter of this evening. Thank you so much for having us.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm pleased to provide an update on the economic development services being provided for the city of Waterloo by Grow Cedar Valley. Since our last update, as Dave said, we've been actively working to promote business growth and investment in Waterloo. Since mid-May, we have engaged with 11 new business opportunities for the city with over $311 million in potential new capital investment and over 675 potential new jobs for the community. Along with that, we conducted six prospect meetings for Grow Cedar Valley's Illinois Lead Generation Initiative. Five of them were virtual with one in person, with one of those projects identifying and having a timely project that we're currently working on. Grow Cedar Valley exhibited with the state of Iowa at the Select USA Trade Show in June. The booth generated 11 booth leads with one of those companies having an immediate project, which we submitted a Waterloo proposal just two weeks ago to the state. We had four separate one-on-one meetings as well and attended a reception held by the Kingdom of the Netherlands, too. We plant a lot of seeds with conferences, meetings, and have seen the momentum come back to us either directly or indirectly. One of those projects can be attributed to an international company looking at establishing a location here to grow their U.S. market. We've met with them at Grow Cedar Valley as well as the city of Waterloo. So we hope that soon we'll have some good news for everyone on that end. We took an aggressive approach this year with external marketing. We're currently conducting outreach to companies in Southern California to identify interest and expansion in Northeast Iowa. In February, we plan to do the same with companies located in Upper New York State and New Jersey. And while in March, we plan to participate in the Site Selection Guild Annual Conference, which is a conference of the top 66 site selection consultants all over the world, which several of them we've actually worked on projects with over many years. In May, we will attend and exhibit IEDA Select USA Conference in Washington, D.C., to identify international companies willing to consider Waterloo and the state of Iowa for a new U.S. location. In June, we will head to the Netherlands, where we plan to conduct lead generation initiatives with Dutch-based companies interested in locating in the U.S. and also interest in Northeast Iowa. During the trip, we'll be partnering again with the state of Iowa and attend the World Bio Market that will also be in the Netherlands. That's why we're picking June to coincide with that event. The international lead that I mentioned just a bit ago was identified at this show by the state a year earlier. Beyond business attraction efforts, we are strongly supporting the growth of existing companies through visits and advocacy. Grow Cedar Valley has assisted nine companies since our last update with expansion plans, touch-based conversations, incentives, and other needs. Overall, we continue to increase our outreach this fiscal year by adding more capacity with staff and economic development initiatives involving business recruitment. Separately, we recognize how the city, the mayor and city council, take and celebrate Waterloo's existing businesses or welcoming a new one to town. Since our last update, Grow Cedar Valley's ambassadors have helped celebrate expansions, milestones, and new locations of 18 Waterloo businesses through ribbon cuttings. And we're not even quite halfway through our fiscal year yet. Thank you for your continued leadership and support as we work to create economic opportunities for Waterloo and the Cedar Valley. Mayor, can take any questions now or we can wait till the end.
I just want to wait till they finish and then ask.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
If there's time.
Yeah, if there's time, so.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Dotweiler, Director of Workforce and Talent. I have four different things that I wanted to talk to you about tonight that I'm excited to share that we've been doing in workforce and talent and some results that we've had. So the first is our population study. So this is something, as we've gone through the planning process for our fiscal year, we decided to go after from a Grow Cedar Valley standpoint. So we are doing a population study, essentially a data source that we subscribe to called Lightcast, has predicted that over the next five years, the Cedar Valley as a whole, or the Waterloo-Cedar Falls Metropolitan Service Area, our statistical area, is estimated to decline in population by 0.6% over the next five years. And so we really want to focus on changing that trajectory and figuring out how we can grow the population, the working age population here in this community, as opposed to it declining. So the initial steps that we've taken is formed a steering committee, which is comprised of people from Waterloo, Cedar Falls, business leaders, so Noel will be on that committee, the mayor of Cedar Falls, mayor of Waverly. We have business leaders from the four major industries in this area, other community leaders, people that, you know, really are passionate about this community and the population. So we've had our first steering committee meeting. And then at this point, we're working on a request for proposal because we are going to be sending it out to hopefully a national consulting firm to have them conduct this study. And then over the course of the next, you know, it could be a year while they're doing the study, then they would take the work and then kind of tell us what they find after that is over. So we're just in initial phases, but really excited about that project. The other thing I want to highlight is our Community Champion Program, which when I was in here in June, I believe that it hadn't started just yet. So this is something that's been going on since about June-July timeframe, but essentially IEDA has partnered with the 16 areas, or the 16 communities that are part of the Iowa Chamber Alliance. And in each community, there's a community champion. So I'm the community champion for Waterloo-Cedar Falls. And IEDA is putting a lot of marketing money to attract people from other states to visit their website, thisisIowa.com. From there, they will ask them to fill out a form to essentially figure out like, and these are people that would potentially want to move to Iowa. They fill out a form and they kind of, you know, go through what kind of community they'd be interested in. And from that, they can get funneled directly to me. So since the June-July timeframe, there's been 1,500 people that have gone and filled out a form and been funneled to different communities. And 62 of them have come here to Waterloo-Cedar Falls that I've actually reached out to myself. It's kind of a long process, it's a long game, they say. So, you know, it's building relationships, connecting them with people that maybe of an industry that they might be interested in working in, or realtors or whatever. But I am happy to report that we actually have one person that has confirmed that they're moving to this area and starting a job on December 2nd from this program. So that's really exciting, out of the 62. The other thing I wanted to mention was is our Talent Connection Network. So we all know that John Deere had layoffs this year. And Iowa Workforce Development has been a tremendous partner to them in providing the resources to the displaced employees. One of the things that we at Grow Cedar Valley determine that maybe we could help with is for the salary side employees, because those benefits might look a little different, what they're looking for might look a little bit different. And we believe that there was about 69 folks affected. So we came together as a team at Grow Cedar Valley in partnership with Iowa Workforce Development and created a webpage that's private, that only these individuals can access. And it essentially has all of the like companies that maybe could be related job opportunities for them on this website and also direct contacts for somebody in HR. So they can actually talk to somebody specifically as opposed to just filling out an application and hoping that somebody gets in touch with them. So there, so far, since we've sent this out to those individuals, we've had 50 users, unique users, access that page and 127 page views. So obviously, people are looking at it and interested, which is awesome. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is our Cedar Valley Intern Connect Program. So when I was here last month, or the last time, I believe that we had our first session. And then we also did another session in July. And so for those that might not know, it was about 30 interns that participated in this program, and they're from different businesses throughout the Cedar Valley. And the whole point of the program was for them to be better connected to the Cedar Valley as a whole, so that they would maybe think of it as a place to move to after college. And also connect with other interns, so while they're here, they're building relationships and meeting other people. And so the program was a success, and we measured some data that I find interesting. So of the 30 attendees, 50% of them made a connection with another intern that they actually hung out with during that summer. So that's a win. And then 100% of the interns said that they had a better connection to the Cedar Valley after they attended the program. And then also when we asked if they were considering living in the Cedar Valley before they went through the Cedar Valley Intern Connect Program, 38% of them said yes, 34% of them said no. After the program, then we asked them the same question, and they said that after they went through the program, 50% of them said that they were interested in living in the Cedar Valley, so that increased by 12%. And the noes went down to 15%. So there was some that moved into the unsure category, but still, we moved the needle in getting people more interested in locating here after college, so. And then this year, we're hoping to do the program again and hoping to double it, so maybe having 60 interns as opposed to 30. That's all for me.
All right, thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Katie Susong. I'm the President and CEO of Grow Cedar Valley, and I will keep my portion brief. I wanted to piggyback on what Steph shared with regard to the intern program. One of our priorities for this year is to build upon the Young Professional Program that we have available here in the Cedar Valley, because we do believe that when people learn about the community, when they establish community for themselves here, that they're much more likely to stay and encourage their friends to stay and potentially come back. So we think that's a really important piece of the work that we're doing here in the Cedar Valley. Earlier this year, we sent an email to you that identified all 12 of our priorities for this year. So it's an aggressive work plan for us. But specifically, when we talk about that Young Professionals piece, we had a year-long plan to implement a new YP program here in the Cedar Valley. Fortunately for us, we had an opportunity to partner with an existing program, the Cedar Valley Young Professionals. The people that were leading that organization, two young men from PDCM Insurance, are now serving as our Advisory Council Chairs for our new Cedar Valley YP program. We actually had our kickoff session last week where they outlined all of the activities that they want to do in year one. And so while we weren't initially planning on starting programming for our YPs until probably summer of 2025, we're actually going to have our first kickoff event in January of this year. So really excited about the opportunities that we're going to have to be able to connect with and hopefully retain our Young Professional community here in the Cedar Valley. As I said, that's just one of 12, but everything that Lisa and Stephanie shared tonight also aligns with our work plan. So we're trying to be very focused in the work that we do this year to ensure that from beginning of year to the end of the year, we can demonstrate results and we can have accountability to ensure that we're getting work done for you, our partners, and for our business investors. So we will continue to send out the quarterly updates where we provide information on our 12 priority projects, more of what you heard tonight. And I would encourage you that if you have any questions at any time, to please reach out to me. I'd be more than happy at any time to have a conversation and fill you in with more details on the work that we're doing at Grow Cedar Valley. But wanted to take an opportunity tonight to say thank you, that we appreciate your partnership. We look forward to continuing to work with you and at any time, if you have feedback, if there are things that you would like to see different from the work that we're doing, I'd certainly encourage you to reach out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, council.
Couple of questions. Go ahead. Did you have questions? Go ahead.
Okay. Very good. Okay, so my first question, just a follow-up, as it related to the workforce. So for the person-specific HR connections, what's the input to that? That kind of helps people figure out similar industries that they may be able to connect with? What's the input? Like if somebody's listening, how would they be able to contact you and see, can I have this person-specific site for me? What would be the input to that?
Are you referring to the Talent Connection Network?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah. So I have reached out to the contacts that I have in HR that I've formed over the last couple of years, and that's who I've asked if they wanted to be a part of that specifically. Another thing that I've done, too, is because of all the displaced workers within this last year, I've started a quarterly survey that I send out to companies that basically I ask them, how many open positions do they have? How many open salary? How many open hourly? And then like, what's their total employment? So then I have that data real time, so I can also kind of use that to make, to, you know, guide me if I think I should reach out to a company and make sure that they get onto this website as well.
Okay. And is that something that an employee could access? Like if they wanted to come to Grow Cedar Valley and say, hey, I'm looking for something? How does that connection happen between that HR company and that person?
Yeah, so it's actually just for, we've just at this point made it for those affected by the John Deere layoffs for the salary workers, so it's just for those 69 individuals. But I think it opens up an opportunity of like, how if it works well, you know, what could the future of it look like? It's also beneficial for me with my Community Champion role, because I'm very aware of what open positions there are in the community. So then when I'm talking to somebody on the phone that lives in Texas that wants to relocate here, I have a better idea of what companies are hiring and can match them up with those specifically.
Okay. I just have one more question. Thank you so much. And I had to do the Young Professionals. If somebody is listening, interested in connecting with the Young Professional group, how would they go about doing that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So as I said, right now, we're kind of still in that planning session, hoping to launch in January with an event. We actually are just working on scheduling that date. We'll have information on our Grow Cedar Valley website within the next couple of weeks. We're also going to start pushing out information on that event and how people can engage on all of our social networks and then the Cedar Valley Young Professionals' existing networks. One thing I should also mention, to incentivize people to get involved early, we anticipate long-term there will be a dues structure associated with our YP program. Now, to clarify, you won't need to be a Grow Cedar Valley investor to be in the YP program, because we want that to be something that is community-wide. But for the first six months, if you're participating in that program, there won't be any dues associated with the event. So it's an opportunity to come and find out what it's all about, to really grow and build the community, make sure it's something that you're interested in before we go into any sort of dues, that sort of thing. So more information on our website and social media networks.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yes.
Was that for me?
Yep, yes.
Okay, I just have a question on what were, or do we know just yet what some of those factors were that had the decline in population? Or will that be better determined after the study is already done?
You may as well sit close to the podium.
We don't know those exactly. I think anecdotally, you know, I think all of us could, we have data that shows us what, who's leaving, I guess you could say, but we don't really have any specific data on why and what kinds of jobs they're going to or anything like that. So that's what we're looking for the consulting firm to help us with.
Who's leaving? I mean, you just said you know who's leaving.
Yeah, the majority are 25 to 29-year-olds.
Yep.
White individuals.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Do you want me to?
You mentioned that there was four, the four major businesses that you worked with. Can you enlighten us on those four?
Yep, on the steering committee, John Deere, Target, Unity Point, and Veridian Credit Union.
And what are we looking at for employee numbers? I mean, we know Deere's, but when you start talking about Veridian and you start talking about, you know, target distribution?
Yeah, so what, since I've been in this role, what I've focused on is the key industries in our area, and done that by data, again. So our key industries, obviously, we know it's manufacturing is one of them, but if I look at the top four when it is in regards to workforce, it's manufacturing, distribution and transportation, healthcare, and finance and insurance. And so that means that they have the most population in those industries, but also that they're growing industries, too. So they're projected to grow over the next 10 years by up to 10%. So that's why I've chosen those key industries and then the top employers in those key industries.
So like with VGM with over 900 employees, they're not listed in here, but you're...
Yeah.
Mercy One's got, you know, they have a huge census, you know, of employees. I mean, Unity Point, I mean, as you look at all of these, I just wondered how you picked the four that you worked with?
We actually have Mike Malero, who's the Chair of the Board of VGM, on the group as well. And he's more of a representative from the past Board Chair, but also knew that VGM being one of our top employers, he could, you know, look at it from that lens as well. But like I said, the reason why we chose those four is because they're each the top employer in that industry. So John Deere is obviously the top employer in manufacturing. Target Distribution, between the two buildings, has close to 2,000 people that they employ, so they're the top in the distribution and transportation industry. Unity Point, I think, has about 3,600 that they employ in this community, so they're the top in the healthcare industry. And then Veridian is, I think, around 600. So for finance and insurance, they're the top employer. So that's why they were chosen, is just all the top employers in the key industries.
Thank you. And I had a question for Noel, maybe he can help me with this one, because the city has some financial support towards Grow Cedar Valley. We have an annual support for them, correct?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, that is correct.
So is it like $76,000 or somewhere?
It is, I think it's closer to $55,000 to $60,000 base, and then there are some incentives that they can earn with companies. It gets up closer to 80.
Can you explain the incentive so that the general public knows how they, as they bring people in, how they're incentivized to bring employers into Waterloo and employees?
Sure, so some of, we have regular meetings with them to go over projects that they're working on. The base pay portions are based on them reaching out, as Lisa noted, to some of these seminars, to reaching out to companies with business visits. Then the incentives are based on a culmination of square footage, acres developed, tax base created, and jobs created.
So on that incentive, is it just jobs created or is there a factor in there on higher-paying jobs? Is it a better incentive or not? Or is it just jobs in general?
It's jobs in general, but obviously, there's a breakout because there's state incentives available for the high-quality job creation program as well. So we will have a breakout of exactly, you know, if there was 62 jobs created and 24 of them were high-quality and the others were lower than what the state requirement was for that, but we'll break those out.
So then there'd be a different incentive then for each category, is it the same?
In terms of how our agreement with Grow Cedar Valley works, it's just overall jobs.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate that information.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. A question, it may be for you, Seth, or for Katie, I'm not sure, but I have a question regarding demographics, I'm sorry. What's the, I know before, when I first joined the council, I was asking about the diversity of your board, diversity of your staff. And I wanted to know, what is the diversity of your board and your staff? Representative of the diversity in the Cedar Valley, primarily Waterloo?
And then also when we asked if they were considering living in the Cedar Valley before they went through the Cedar Valley Intern Connect Program, thirty-eight percent of them said yes, thirty-four percent of them said no. After the program, then we asked them the same question, and they said that after they went through the program, fifty percent of them said that they were interested in living in the Cedar Valley, so that increased by twelve percent. And the noes went down to fifteen percent. So there was some that moved into the unsure category. But still, we moved the needle in getting people more interested in locating here after college. So, and then this year, we're hoping to do the program again and hoping to double it, so maybe having sixty interns as opposed to thirty. That's all from me.
All right, thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Katie Susong. I'm the president and CEO of Grow Cedar Valley, and I will keep my portion brief. I wanted to piggyback on what Steph shared with regard to the intern program. One of our priorities for this year is to build upon the Young Professional Program that we have available here in the Cedar Valley, because we do believe that when people learn about the community, when they establish community for themselves here, that they're much more likely to stay and encourage their friends to stay and potentially come back. So we think that's a really important piece of the work that we're doing here in the Cedar Valley. Earlier this year, we sent an email to you that identified all twelve of our priorities for this year. So it's an aggressive work plan for us. But specifically, when we talk about that Young Professionals piece, we had a year-long plan to implement a new YP program here in the Cedar Valley. Fortunately for us, we had an opportunity to partner with an existing program, the Cedar Valley Young Professionals. The people that were leading that organization, two young men from PDCM Insurance, are now serving as our Advisory Council Chairs for our new Cedar Valley YP program. We actually had our kickoff session last week where they outlined all of the activities that they want to do in year one. And so while we weren't initially planning on starting programming for our YPs until probably summer of 2025, we're actually going to have our first kickoff event in January of this year. So really excited about the opportunities that we're going to have to be able to connect with and hopefully retain our Young Professional Community here in the Cedar Valley. As I said, that's just one of twelve, but everything that Lisa and Stephanie shared tonight also aligns with our work plan. So we're trying to be very focused in the work that we do this year to ensure that from beginning of year to the end of the year, we can demonstrate results and we can have accountability to ensure that we're getting work done for you, our partners, and for our business investors. So we will continue to send out the quarterly updates where we provide information on our twelve priority projects, more of what you heard tonight. And I would encourage you that if you have any questions at any time, to please reach out to me. I'd be more than happy at any time to have a conversation and fill you in with more details on the work that we're doing at Grow Cedar Valley. But wanted to take an opportunity tonight to say thank you, that we appreciate your partnership. We look forward to continuing to work with you, and at any time, if you have feedback, if there are things that you would like to see different from the work that we're doing, I'd certainly encourage you to reach out. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone else? All right, council.
Couple of questions. Go ahead. Did you have questions? Go ahead.
Okay. Very good. Okay, so my first question, just a follow-up, as it related to the workforce. So for the person-specific HR connections, what's the input to that? That kind of helps people figure out similar industries that they may be able to connect with? What's the input? Like if somebody's listening, how would they be able to contact you and see, can I have this person-specific site for me? What would be the input to that?
Are you referring to the Talent Connection Network?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I have reached out to the contacts that I have in HR that I've formed over the last couple of years, and that's who I've asked if they wanted to be a part of that specifically. Another thing that I've done too is because of all the displaced workers within this last year, I've started a quarterly survey that I send out to companies that basically I ask them, how many open positions do they have? How many, how many open salary? How many open hourly? And then like what's their total employment? So then I have that data real time, so I can also kind of use that to make, to, you know, guide me if I think I should reach out to a company and make sure that they get onto this website as well.
Okay. And is that something that an employee could access? Like if they wanted to come to Grow Cedar Valley and say, hey, I'm looking for something? How does that, how does that connection happen between that HR company and that person?
Yeah, so it's actually just for, we've just at this point made it for those affected by the John Deere layoffs for the salary workers, so it's just for those sixty-nine individuals. But I think it opens up an opportunity of like how, if it works well, you know, what could the future of it look like? It's also beneficial for me with my Community Champion role, because I'm very aware of what open positions there are in the community. So then when I'm talking to somebody on the phone that lives in Texas that wants to relocate here, I have a better idea of what companies are hiring and can match them up with those specifically.
Okay. I just have one more question. Thank you so much. And I had to do the Young Professionals. If somebody is listening, interested in connecting with the Young Professional Group, how would they go about doing that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So as I said, right now, we're kind of still in that planning session, hoping to launch in January with an event. We actually are just working on scheduling that date. We'll have information on our Grow Cedar Valley website within the next couple of weeks. We're also going to start pushing out information on that event and how people can engage on all of our social networks and then the Cedar Valley Young Professionals existing networks. One thing I should also mention, to incentivize people to get involved early, we anticipate long-term there will be a dues structure associated with our YP program. Now, to clarify, you won't need to be a Grow Cedar Valley investor to be in the YP program, because we want that to be something that is community-wide. But for the first six months, if you're participating in that program, there won't be any dues associated with the event. So it's an opportunity to come and find out what it's all about, to really grow and build the community, and make sure it's something that you're interested in before we go into any sort of dues or that sort of thing. So more information on our website and social media networks.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes.
Was that for me?
Yep, yes.
Okay, I just have a question on what were, or do we know just yet what some of those factors were that had the decline in population? Or will that be better determined after the study is already done?
You may as well sit close to the podium.
We don't know those exactly. I think anecdotally, you know, I think all of us could, we have data that shows us what, who's leaving, I guess you could say, but we don't really have any specific data on why and what kinds of jobs they're going to or anything like that. So that's what we're looking for the consulting firm to help us with.
Who's leaving?
That too.
I mean, you just said you know who's leaving.
Yeah, the majority are twenty-five to twenty-nine-year-olds.
Yep.
White individuals.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Do you want me to?
You mentioned that there was four, the four major businesses that you worked with. Can you, can you enlighten us on those four?
Yep, on the Steering Committee, John Deere, Target, Unity Point, and Veridian Credit Union.
And what, what are we looking at for employee numbers? I mean, we know Deere's, but when you start talking about Veridian and you start talking about, you know, Target Distribution?
Yeah, so what, since I've been in this role, what I've focused on is the key industries in our, in our area, and done that by, by data again. So our key industries, obviously, we know it's manufacturing is one of them, but if I look at the top four when it is in regards to workforce, it's manufacturing, distribution and transportation, healthcare, and finance and insurance. And so that means that they have the most population in those industries, but also that they're growing industries too. So they're projected to grow over the next ten years by up to ten percent. So that's why I have chosen those key industries and then the top employers in those key industries.
So, so like with VGM with over nine hundred employees, they're, they're not listed in here, but you're...
Yeah.
Mercy One's got, you know, they're, they're, they have a huge census, you know, of employees. I mean, Unity Point, I mean, as you look at all of these, I just wondered how you, how you picked the four that you've worked with?
We actually have Mike Malero, who's the Chair of the Board of VGM, on the group as well, and he's more of a representative from the past Board Chair, but also knew that VGM being one of our top employers, he could, you know, look at it from that lens as well. But like I said, the, the reason why we chose those four is because they're each the top employer in that industry. So John Deere is obviously the top employer in manufacturing. Target Distribution between the two buildings has close to two thousand people that they employ, so they're the top in the distribution and transportation industry. Unity Point, I think, has about thirty-six hundred that they employ in this community, so they're the top in, in the healthcare industry. And then Veridian is, I think, around six hundred. So for finance and insurance, they're the top employer. So that's why they were chosen, is just all the top employers in the key industries.
Thank you. And I had a question for Noel, maybe he could help me with this one, because the city, the city has some, some financial support towards, towards Grow Cedar Valley. We, we have an annual support for them, correct?
That is Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, that is correct.
So is it like seventy-six thousand or somewhere?
It is, I think it's closer to fifty-five to sixty thousand base, and then there are some incentives that they can earn with, with companies. It gets up closer to eighty.
Can you explain the incentive so that the general public knows how they, as they bring people in, how they're incentivized with, to, to bring employers into Waterloo and employees?
Sure, so some of, we, we have regular meetings with them to go over projects that they're working on. The, the base pay portions are based on them reaching out, as Lisa noted, to some of these seminars, to reaching out to companies with business visits. Then the incentives are based on a culmination of square footage, acres developed, tax base created, and jobs created.
So on that, on that incentive, is, is it, is it just jobs created or is it, is there, is there a factor in there on higher-paying jobs? Is it a better incentive or not? Or is it just jobs in general?
It's, it's jobs in general, but obviously there's, there's a breakout because there's state incentives available for the high-quality job creation program as well. So we will have a breakout of exactly, you know, if there was sixty-two jobs created and twenty-four of them were high-quality and the others were lower than what the state requirement was for that, but we'll break those out.
So then there'd be a different incentive then for, for each category, or is it the same?
In terms of how our agreement with Grow Cedar Valley works, it's just overall jobs.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate that information.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. I have a question, it may be for Youssef or for Katie, I'm not sure. But I have a question regarding demographics, I'm sorry. What's the, I know before, when I first joined the council, I was asking about the diversity of your board, diversity of your staff, and I wanted to know, what is the diversity of your board and your staff representative of the diversity in the Cedar Valley, primarily Waterloo? The other question, twofold question, is that given we are naturally known for some things that we don't want to be known for, what are you doing to actively engage people of color, in particular African-Americans, in the work that you are doing in the community to increase the number of African-Americans and other minorities, minoritized people that are employed, as well as businesses that are supported? We had a business in here a couple of weeks ago that didn't feel that they had the same kind of rapport and support of downtown Waterloo. But so, so some of, those are some of the questions and concerns that, that I have about the way in which our community, my community is being reflected and served.
I'll answer the second part of that question if you want. And for me personally, how I'm getting involved is I'm a part of the Advancing Equity Group. I don't know if you're familiar with that, Advancing Equity in the Cedar Valley. It's a group that was formed in two thousand and eighteen after the article came out about this being the worst place for black Americans to live. And so a group of people, so Kay England, Lisa Susterenhorn, Joy Briscoe, and Caitlin, I can't remember her last name, from Black Hawk County Health, are kind of the leaders of this group. And essentially, the purpose of it is to figure out how to increase or advance equity for underserved populations in all different sectors. So workforce is a sector, financial is a sector, healthcare, there's like sixteen different sectors. So I'm a part of the workforce sector, and so that is me, Joy Briscoe, and Chelsea Lurin from the city of Cedar Falls. And so we meet on a monthly basis to talk about all of the work that we're each doing and kind of make sure that we're aligned and that it's kind of moving the needle in this advancing equity work as well. So, which I didn't really talk about the ecosystem, it's in the packet. That's, it's, the ecosystem is something that I'm working on, kind of in combination with this group as well, where there's all of these different organizations that support workforce development, but they don't know about each other. And so therefore, individuals maybe aren't getting made aware of the opportunities that are available to them, of like being upskilled in certain areas or going through training programs or things that maybe are available to them, they're not aware. So this, the ecosystem is really about kind of getting a map of all of the resource that's available in the workforce space to kind of create that baseline for all individuals. And then we're, we're going to see where it goes from there, so.
So have you seen much progress since two thousand and eighteen? Because I hadn't heard much about the work in, in my community, and maybe it's because you need more people from the community to help provide that information. I mean, if you're not living in the community, navigating the community, you really wouldn't know what is needed. So I don't, you know, just, it's important that we be involved and individuals who have that connection with, with folks in the community, it's important that they are involved. And I know you named a group, but there, those individuals aren't, I mean, I've worked with Caitlin on some other kinds of things, but they're not really, Caitlin's probably the closest because she's at the Health Department.
Yeah.
But there are other people that could really, you know, as, working for Cedar Valley, I think that, that's, you know, I don't know what your diversity, your representation is, if it's representative of the community or not, but that's imperative as well. The business on the, the businesses on the north side of Franklin, you know, there's just a few, but my hope is that the few that are there would get the support to become the kind of businesses that people would, would mind going to. I mean, True Value is one that we were so proud of, but we've got others there that aren't really, you know, doing much, except for the Cedar Valley thrift store, you know, but, so yeah, just some conversations we need to have about this.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I don't know if we have time.
She just answered the second part, and then we'll take your question and then we'll close it down.
I just want to say, I don't have the exact figures for our diversity on our board and staff, but I will look that information up and get it back to you. I will also say there's room for improvement. I do believe that, both in our representation within the organization, but how we, how we work with a diverse business community. One of the things that we are doing right now is we've got a sponsored investor program, and we're getting ready to kick that off again in the next week or so, and then by January first, we'll have our sponsored investors identified. That program is really designed to encourage diversity in our membership group and to provide opportunities for membership in Grow Cedar Valley for companies that either can't afford it, because, let's be honest, four seventy-five for a new business, a startup business can, can be a barrier. And we want to make sure that we're the business community or the business organization for the entire community. So that program will be rolling out. As I said, we'll be looking for nominations. We do start with our highest tier of investors with Grow Cedar Valley. They have an opportunity or a benefit as part of their membership is to sponsor one of these no-cost investors. So we'll start with them, but we do open it up for all businesses to participate in the nomination process, and typically we select between twenty and thirty. And so they're, in that first year of membership, they have all of the same benefits as, as a paying Grow Cedar Valley member. It's an opportunity to engage with the business community and, and hopefully grow their business to a point they can continue to be a part of the Grow Cedar Valley community. But I, I would love to hear if you have thoughts on how we could engage further, who to talk to, because I, I agree, I think there's more that can be done.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
All right, we'll go to Mr. Simon.
I'm just going to ask a few questions, and I know we're kind of short on time. I would appreciate if somebody would reach out to me via my email and set up, give me two or three or four times, that would work, and I'd like to sit down and get some of these questions answered if I could. But I'll just kind of give you a head start on what, what I'm going to be asking you. When is the, how long has Grow Cedar Valley been operating in the city?
So we've been a combined organization for twenty years, so we've been, yeah, twenty years.
Okay, so some of the questions I have is like, when's the last time Grow Cedar Valley procured a business in the Waterloo Cedar Falls or Waterloo area that had fifty to a hundred-plus employees? And then I don't want you to answer, because I, we can go over this later.
Yeah.
The other thing that was mentioned earlier was this, thisisIowa.com. It's other communities in the state of Iowa, correct, that are part of this group? And that there was fifteen hundred people that went to there and filled out some applications, and sixty-two of them reportedly were interested in Waterloo, and we got one person?
Okay.
So I want to know if there's a way to get that up a little bit? And who are the other communities that we're competing against? And when we lose bids to these other cities, are we finding out, like in an external interview, what, what it was that they chose the other city over Waterloo for? That's, that's the kind of thing I want to start looking at, is like, what, what are we missing out on? What are we not offering these businesses when they come to town?
So that's for the business piece, not necessarily for the, the This is Iowa piece? You want to know about the businesses, correct?
Sure. I'm just saying, in general, this, this is the questions that I have.
Yep.
And like I said, there's a few other questions, but just to give you an idea, those are the kind of questions I want to know where, you know, if we're not being successful and we have this six percent loss in talent coming up, have you guys thought of new ways to do things that you haven't done the last twenty years? Because if we're going downhill, we need to turn the trajectory up somehow.
Yep. I absolutely agree.
That's all, I just wanted to...
I'll reach out to you to set up a meeting.
I appreciate it.
Short answer is yes. We are, we are looking at how we do things differently. I just actually started in this role eight months ago, and so we are taking a different approach to how we do economic development and how we recruit talent and really how we work with our partners. So I would love to have a conversation with you to talk through these things.
Thank you. Thank you for presentation.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Set the motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Second. Motion being made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn, thank you.
Okay. I was thinking...
Mr. Boson for Mr. Foyce?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Mr. Childs?
Here.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Councilman.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda and approve the minutes of the November fourth, twenty twenty-four as proposed.
Second.
Motion being made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's been made, motion passes. Can I have someone take travel requests, please?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Childs.
I, I move to approve the following travel request. Jeffrey Wolf, Accommodation Inspector, Class Meeting B1 ICC Residential Building Inspector, online, TBD for dates, not to exceed two hundred and forty dollars. Rick Kirby, Housing Maintenance Staff, Inspire Housing Inspection for Housing Choice voucher, Nan McKay Webinar, December sixteenth to eighteenth, not to exceed a thousand dollars. Rudy Jones, Director, and Tracy Southall, Housing Program Manager for New Grantee Orientation in Arlington, Virginia, December second through fifth, for three thousand five hundred, three thousand five hundred eighty-five, forty-six cents. Jesse Garrity, Collection System Project Director, Damian Fishel, Safety and Compliance Director, Matt Boquist, Boquist, Street Director. Sheila Steffen, Public Works Coordinator, and that is for the LEED Leadership Basics at Hawkeye Community College for December twenty twenty-five, not to exceed four thousand seven hundred dollars. And Latoya Hall, Housing Coordinator, Nan McKay Webinar Training, HCV Specialist Certification Webinar, December ninth through thirteenth, not to exceed one thousand three hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
Motion has been made with a second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion's passes. All right, preauthorizations.
Chair.
Mr. Boson.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following preauthorizations, over twenty-five hundred dollars. Airport epoxy floor coating, amount twenty-three thousand six hundred and eighty dollars for epoxy floor coating for hangar three. Number seven is airport repair WHAM, amount eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents, repair hydraulic leak on JD WHAM, whatever that is. Fire Department, twenty twenty-four Ford F-350 four-wheel drive, amount fifty thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars, replacing a two thousand four Chevy plow truck. Number one-two-one-three-two-five, Fire Department with F, with a twenty twenty-four F-350. Number nine is central garage floor repair, three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-five cents, floor repair for new steel on Packer number one-five-one-three-zero-one. Number ten is central garage shelving, amount eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents, plus seventeen hundred dollars shipping and handling, shelving for central garage. Number eleven is Human Resources Biometric Screening, amount seventy-two hundred and sixty-five dollars, employee biometric screening from the twenty twenty-four Wellness Fair. Number twelve is Leisure Services, snow and ice removal, amount a hundred and thirty dollars per man-hour, not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, manager's snow and ice removal, including equipment and solid application as needed on newly constructed sidewalks and crosswalks at the University and Kimball Avenue corridors. Number thirteen is Police Department Software, amount five thousand three hundred dollars, iCrimefighter software renewal. Number fourteen is Police Department Laptop Upgrades, twenty-two thousand eighty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents, replace seven end-of-life patrol car Toughbook laptop computers. Number fifteen is Police Software Renewal, amount twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars, Leeds Online Annual Software Renewal. Number sixteen is Sewer Department for Fence, amount seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, fence for Fletcher Storm Lift Station along Highway sixty-three. Number seventeen is Sewer Department for Lamps, eighty-four thousand two hundred and forty dollars, plus eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-five cents shipping and handling for new ultraviolet disinfection lamps. Number eighteen is Traffic Operations, Street Light Poles, not to exceed forty thousand dollars, street light poles for replacement within the city.
Second.
All right, motion has been made with a second, discussion.
I just want to make a comment on the, because I had conversations with Mr. Bennett on that, on the purchase of the garage shelving, and I, I appreciate that he's had some training on, on preauthorizations.
All right, very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right, Budget Line lines to be amended, first, number nineteen, and make a motion to approve the budget amendment to increase cash on hand revenue line and building improvements expense line in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for restricted project cash use for youth service desks, per the Guernsey Foundation approval, as submitted by the library. And number twenty, approve the budget amendment for, budget amendment to increase sale of equipment revenue line and motor vehicles expense line in the amount of nine thousand five hundred dollars to purchase a new plow truck, as submitted by the Fire Department.
Second.
All right, for, motion been made with a second, any discussion on these two items?
Just had a question for the Fire Chief.
All right.
On why we're upgrading to a one-ton truck.
Still back Fire Chief, the reason we're upgrading is basically availability. That's what we could find, price was relatively similar to what we had before with a three-quarter ton. And if we can speak honestly, the three-quarter ton for being twenty years old is, was a pretty big disappointment. It had extreme corrosion issues underneath, and that's why we ended up getting rid of it, was because it actually kind of broke in half a little bit.
Frame problems. So are you doing anything to, to, to offset the problems with extreme corrosion? Are we doing anything different with this?
It's something I have to discuss with Public Works. I'm not sure with Ford, if the one tons come with the galvanized body or with the aluminum body. That's something that we will discuss, possibly an undercoating before it ever hits the road.
As I was questioning, because of the problems you had with your other one.
For sure on the table.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And for bills payment, make a motion to, passing forward to council, the bills payment for November twelfth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of five million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-six cents, and for November eighteenth, in the amount of six million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-three cents.
Second.
All right, motion being made with a second, any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.